Call this meeting to order. Please rise for the place loop. Alright, first on. Approval of board meeting minutes for March twelfth, twenty twenty five. It has been moved and seconded approved board meeting minutes for March twelfth, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Uh, approval of meeting agenda.
I'll make a question for the approval of meeting agenda. Am I no changes?
It has been moved and seconded approve, uh, the meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any changes? No changes, okay. Uh, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Uh, consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval consent agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been, uh, moved and seconded. To approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Right. Booster fundraiser approvals, uh, Elma softball is first on the list.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Elma softball booster fundraiser.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded approve the Elma softball boosters fundraiser. Is there any discussion?
So the concession one is scratched. Is that confirmed scratched out or?
So it is a scratch?
Okay.
So as it stands.
As it reads. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Approval of Elma High School Equestrian Booster Fundraiser.
Uh, we have a quick question on your, uh, raffle tickets for the car wash. Will it just say Elma Equestrian Booster Club? How is that gonna read?
It's actually, I'll let her explain.
It's not a car wash, it's a raffle ticket.
Car raffle, excuse me.
Car raffle, right. So Heidi fell with I five cars down in Chehalis.
Okay.
They donate a car every year for our youth, uh, groups to sell with a hundred percent of purchase or the sales going to the. But so we have insurance, we have to get approval from you and then we have to get the gambling license. But it basically, they would like a presence in Grace Harbor. Um, to be able to sell tickets for our team to sell tickets. I would say Elma Equestrian Boosters. On it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I was just looking for the wording.
Yeah.
Whether it was. You know.
No.
Your high school or how it was done because it's.
Yeah.
Looks like, I mean, is it really even our?
So you can go to I five.
Yeah.
Car giveaway and it'll actually tell you, um, all about it.
I think it's fantastic fundraiser.
No, I was just gonna say, I did go to the website today and just looked at it just to.
Yeah, this year it's, uh, you can all buy tickets from these kids. They're ten dollars each. But, um, it's a two thousand twenty five tournament that, and they deck it all out. And you'd either, if you are the winning ticket holder, you'd either. Take the car and pay the taxes and licensing or you can take fifty thousand dollars. As a winner.
So and have you guys spoken with the gambling commission yet on what you need to?
Uh, Sandy has, who's our. Yeah, so we, um, so my daughter works for Silver Agency who, um. Does all the advertising for I five car. And Sandy has been in contact with Alice in that office who's trying to help her. Get the paperwork ready for the gambling. We just didn't want to do it before we knew you guys let us do it.
It probably says, I'm apologizing because our readers aren't being that cooperative, but is there a minimum number of tickets that must be sold?
No, so we, so we plan to order five hundred tickets. The cost to our team is a hundred, all we do is pay for the tickets.
Right.
Cost our team is a hundred and eighty dollars, I believe, plus tax. They also provide us with, um, boards, advertising boards to put at our place. And we also, if we can set up like an event and we can have access to bring the card there with us. So people can actually look at it in Grace Harbor. Uh, yeah, there's like W L West in the Thurston County does it and.
Lewis County and. Actually do it. It's kind of a nice fundraiser, you know, I put a lot of money out. You can sell the tickets and you get a hundred percent of proceeds and they kind of absorb all the gambling section of it. It's just, we want to make sure since it is a raffle that we go through the gambling commission and.
Well, they actually will sell you the tickets unless you have them.
Oh, okay, perfect.
So the, so I five cars is actually selling you the tickets and then.
Yeah, so they're, so I have cars there. They, yeah, you buy the tickets. I don't know if it's through I five cars or through the silver agency or the printer. People that print the tickets off, I, I've been telling you.
They provide you access to getting the tickets.
Yes, they, we give them money, we get five hundred tickets and I think they're in books at hand. And then after the tickets are sold, the books, the other half goes to I five cars to be put in them, whatever, and the money goes into our equestrian team account. Sandy being our treasurer.
Yeah, I think the only big issue that I would see is like. Is if you want to bring the car up and have it like on the campus, it's just making sure that we have a range of its sort. Just the liability and it's like it's grass or something like that. So I think that would almost be like. That if I'm reaching, it's only concerning, which is a very, very minor.
Right.
Concern. So I'm not throwing it out there like. I'm saying.
I was thinking more like our rodeos are.
Kind of what I figured.
Yeah.
I think he was just covering your bases as far as I think there was.
The Grace Harbor Fair, we can talk in the fairgrounds and get a table and have a car there.
And have a presence there.
Um, the road is kind of gone. They do, they actual, they pick the winner in October during this big football jamboree thing. I don't really know what that is, but it's a big, it's a big thing.
Charlie in Chehalis.
Yeah. Okay, so I don't know, but.
Yeah.
Just have to be first so I can talk to you about this. So, um. But yeah, so.
Oh, the swamp club.
Yes.
I was wondering what that was, but.
Now you know.
I would, yeah, I guess. I would just make sure that you're, um, that you have the correct licensing with the gambling commission.
Yeah, and like I said, they won't even give us the tickets unless we do.
Yeah. I'll move for the, uh. Elma Equestrian Booster Club fundraisers.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded approve the Elma High School Equestrian Booster Fundraiser. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to say no, every administrator generally says yes to the first kid who asks. Not every kid, but the first kid who asks.
Oh, that's, that's, that's my rule on fundraiser students. If you guys want to, if you guys want to join us for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to. If not, you're free to leave. Thank you.
Take care.
We'll make blankets with them.
Have a good night.
Alright, thank you.
We need people to cheer, cheer.
This coming weekend?
Yeah, Saturday around six.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Alright, next on the list, discussion items, instructional practices, uh, looks like Mark, Greg and Tasha.
I'm gonna open up just, uh, just to start with. You know, I've been in this business thirty nine years. It's a long time. In the last two, three years, I've seen more focus and energy. Put on instructional practices or prepping for, uh, quality instructional practices than I've ever seen in this district. You guys have been a big part of that. These guys have been a great team. They've been working tremendous amount of time, tremendous amount of time and energy into. Into this and I want you to know they're very humble people. So I have a feeling they're gonna kind of talk about maybe one or two aspects of their instructional practices that are going on. I'm gonna try to fill and do my best to fill in the blanks when they're done, uh, because they're a lot. Remember this, that as we talked about mastery based learning, uh, uh, good instructional practices, uh, and best practices, it really comes down to. Teaching to a set of standards, priority standards you've identified. Creating, uh, fo- some focus outcomes. Uh, so that we can measure student proficiency against those. And then those students know what those standards are and those outcomes are. And then the last thing you have to do is engage the students in their learning. We've been spending a lot of time that might seem indirect to instruction, but it's been, it's gonna play a very important role to move forward. But then I'm gonna kind of get out of the way. I'm gonna turn over to Greg first and, uh, then Tasha and then I'll try to fill in the gaps.
So I was just looking around a little more, thinking, how many people in this room? Was your teacher at one point, right? Yeah, yeah, okay.
Teacher, principal.
And I'll never.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, uh, you've already said the picture's worth a thousand words, so I'm gonna take you on a little, uh, virtual, uh, field trip. Uh, but the great things are happening. I want elementary school and what I want to focus on is just the engaging practices that are happening. Uh, because we believe that if kids are more involved in understanding what they're doing, it's being taught in authentic ways. The kids can connect if they have choice, um, that's gonna increase student work. So I'll show you a little bit about what we're doing at Elma Elementary School. And so Eric. Could be operator in my, oh, hey, looky there. So, um, you guys saw a little bit of this at the, uh, recent, our last school board meeting. But, uh, here we have, um, class to class presentations happening. And specifically in, uh, the pictures you see right here, actually the kids have presented to you at the school board are in. Out there somewhere in that picture. Uh, this is, uh, Mrs. Hendrix's class. Kids went to third grade, filling into, uh. Mrs. Hill's class, first grade. And the, the cool part is, is that the. What was so exciting to see is watching the third graders explain to those younger kids these concepts. You know, what, uh, bones and all the different systems. And then the little kids, you know, they're so cute. They ask questions and so those kids are having a think critically. And, and I, I'm honestly, I don't think they'll ever forget what they learned. About the body, about speaking and being able to process. So a- all of the good things with, with teaching and learning, but that, that was a very fun activity. And that's another picture of the same thing. It's presentations going on there. Um, we also have, uh, classes that will go into another class and they'll read, they'll read to the kids and then the younger kids read to the older kids. And it's another way to interact with literature, um, in, in a way that's highly engaging. The kids love to read to the kids and the kids love to read to the older kids. And so that, that's been fun. We've also had, um, well, actually this presentation you have, um, here we see Margaret Young's class. They were, their class, if you remember at the presentation, they had the Penguin Projects. And so there's pictures of them presenting to, uh, younger kids. Um, and we had Mrs. Hutchings' class, uh, they did similar with the, the bodies and the systems. They presented to other classes as well. Here, there's pictures. I think actually Chris was with me.
Hold up my photos.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, see, Chris was there, right? But that was fun. Um, and kind of at the heart of all of this, this is, uh, you know, as Mark was talking about the last few years, just seeing the tremendous increase in. Effective instruction and just, this is just catching fire. We're, we're learning is really happening. At the elementary school, when we adopted Ready Math Minutes. A big component of that was student to student talk. And there's, there's some specific strategies called think pair share. There are different ways to get kids to interact with each other about their learning. And so, and that has diffused or it's permeated throughout the system. And, and any classroom that you go into. You're gonna see kids talking about their, with other kids, explaining, talking, you know. This is, I know, and there are some protocols, like how do you listen? Okay, then how do you get feedback and stuff and says, hey, you know, that's, you know, they, there's, everything has to be taught. But, uh, it's amazing watching these kids listening to each other, presenting to each other. This happens all the time. In our, just in, in all content areas. So here we see some little guys, uh, working together, sharing concepts. Here's a picture from a third grade classroom and, um, I'm actually got a little video for you that I'll show you what this looks like. But the teachers are looking for just little things they can do to get kids to be, uh, more excited about engagement. So notice these things. I don't know what they're called, but man, the kids sure love them when they get to, with their partner and they get to go over and sit with this thing. And they, and they've got a special table that's really loaded with ground they had to work on. And so, uh, the pictures that you see here, this teacher. She, uh, with, with her assistants, she helps them, but they have different choices that they can go to. That are all directed to what it is that they're learning. And then they have different, um, stations that they, that they can go to that will support that intended learning. I think I have a little video of what this classroom looks like. Room, she's just in classroom. That because I remember back, a long time ago, when I became a teacher, I remember, um, thinking, okay, I want to make sure that I have my kids lined up. Quiet, we're gonna work, they're being disruptive, et cetera. It's totally the opposite now. We want kids actively involved. Okay, so. Okay, now, now it should go, right? Okay. And, um, so here's more student to student learning. So this is, uh. This is first grade, our, our little, uh, guys who are just full of excitement. And the other thing the teacher's trying to do is make learning fun. You, you know, you're gonna see kids laughing and smiling and there's competition. Uh, these kids right here. Uh, they're doing what's called, um, uh, number corner or, or it's a morning activity. That they're teaching, uh, the kids about number sense and how to bring things together. And, and this is Mrs. TG, she asked, uh, her kids, she goes. I want you to write down as many ways as possible that you can represent a certain number. So then they're just going down. Then, then they'll share results with each other. They'll talk. And then they, then they have fun little competitions as well. So the next slide you're gonna see, as soon as they did this, um, she pulled up, she, she, uh, has this container that has popsicle sticks. And she pulled a couple names and those kids came up and they have, uh, well, I'll show you. Their challenge. Can you hold off the start that? Go ahead. I wanna kind of set up a little bit. So, uh, Ms. TG, she has this very engaging music. It's like a one minute little video that's different all the time. And the kids have one minute to get these, um, paper strips in order. From zero to a hundred. So each of those strips represent, uh, a series of numbers. And so here they go. See how they did. And they're excited. They're excited. Oh, you want to put these up there? Yeah, it's, it's exciting. And they're, so when it's their turn, they have watched, they've got some ideas, they're ready to apply their new thinking, their new idea. Um, here we see, uh, in class, again, this, they're working on sentence. The, the kids are creating sentences or writing sentences. And so the teacher gives them different objects. They arrange the objects that we. Gives them will write sentences so they share their sentences and they swap their cards and they, um, give them, it's an engaging way to practice writing. And right here, uh, and I'll show you, you get a little video clip of this coming up. This is in Mrs. Young's class. And, um, another thing that you see happening, uh, more and more and more in classrooms is after the kids have been, um. Taught a concept, um, and maybe you have some direct teaching involved in that, then you have the kids, okay. Turn to the partner, person next to you, is this me? You know, there's, and they set all of this up, the teachers do. So again, there's effective dialogue and, and watch these kids, watch their expressions when they start talking to each other. Love that one, the guy's expression. He's listening, I mean, what he's hearing there. Uh, and again, this is happening all the time, this, this kind of interaction between the kids. Trying to dance. That's what I was saying. No, it shouldn't have, shouldn't have. Yeah. Um, so again, this is a picture, you guys already saw these guys in action. This is a third grade classroom. I was doing observation in there. We have, we have a student teacher in there and I said, hey, let me come in and do an observation so I can talk about you in a knowledgeable way. So I'll see you in action. So I went into her room and, um, if you noticed, watch some of these right there. It's a really good classroom. Wanted just one point of that. I, I see, I, I have a kind of a low case thing going here.
Gonna be flying. It's not gonna be good.
I'm not gonna lie.
Anyway, so.
The way you're saying, it's not a lot of learning going on.
Oh, if there was a coop, no.
The money in person, like what?
I know, me too.
Oh, boy, we could have fun with this, but, uh, so. Uh, traditional mathematics, if you think about, like, I used to teach math, I would, uh, present the lesson, I would, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of interaction. A lot of it was teacher led, kids working, I would go up and help them, maybe some small group stuff. A lot of it was, I'm teaching, you're learning and. These little guys, so after they get the basic concept of what they're supposed to do, the, the math skill that they're working on. Then they, uh, get their footboards and there are problems like these little, uh, their task, task cards all around the room. And then together, they come and then what they've already done is they, the teacher has, um, given them practice on how to do it. They practice it, they, they've showed some individual, uh, mastery. Now they're connecting with their peers and they're going around from, uh, task card to task card. They're writing down how they solve the problem, they're writing their different strategies and how they solve it. And they're, and they're telling and they're teaching the peers. This is how, this is, this is how we got the answer. And very, very engaging. Okay, so we'll, we'll, uh, this, so. First graders, these are little first graders. And, uh, this is in Debbie Hashi's class. And Debbie Hashi is truly. Uh, uh, she is truly a master teacher. But what she has these little guys doing, she's, she's been teaching them. Um, how to do, uh, double addition, addition. Uh, and, uh, different strategies that they could use to do this. And now these two little guys are gonna. Tell Mrs. Hashi and they're gonna do the problems of it for her. So let's watch these guys.
Yeah.
Sixty four plus thirty two equals blank.
Decide who's doing what way, what strategy are you going to use?
Good little guy on top, he's gonna go with more of a traditional algorithm. And they, one guy on the bottom, he's gonna, he's going to do a, uh, physical representation. He's gonna change his mind, then he's gonna go with a, a representation of his, uh. You see him, he can count. Really impressed, they're, they're counting in their head. She knows finger. Oh, no, he's always looking on the chart actually. So part we did see is when they, when they, uh, when they represented, showed their answers, the little guy on the right. He actually, um, because Mrs. Hashi has told the kids, you know, actually when you're teaching, when you're explaining how you solve the problem, if you made an error. That's a lot of times when you find it, sure enough, he did, he realized he was able to ditch it off and he made a correction. Um, but, uh, again, what you, uh, with this math curriculum that we've been using now. It's not uncommon to go to classroom and you see kids, just like what we saw earlier, that they're picking their strategy, they're writing it down. I'm gonna, you're my partner, we're going to, I'm gonna show you, this is how I got my answer. You're going to critically think, okay, I, I think that, you know, I agree with you. You're gonna show me what you did. And there's this back and forth of teaching the concept as well as thinking critically, you know, to help your, your friend. Uh, also, uh, we like to do, uh, fun classroom presentations that involve students. This gentleman has been going to schools, probably longer than Mark's been teaching. That's a little big, uh, so I'm a little bit more, so I. No, so, uh, this gentleman comes and he does a presentation on, uh, Lewis Sinclair and kids love it. And they brings the kids up and there's multiple class, there's multiple, uh, stu-, uh, grades or, or I'm sorry, multiple classes. In that classroom. And then also, we just did this the other day, our fifth graders, they, um. They grew some salmon and they went out and released them into the wild. That, that happened this week. So that's pretty exciting to see. Again, there's an engaging experience that the teachers then can talk about this process. There's all kinds of data, there's, there's charts. You know, trying to use this fun experience to, uh, connect learning to. And I want to end it with this, uh, this picture. This little girl, if you could read this, it says, this is the second grader. Says, I get as smart, and with her little hearts, as I get, I love brainstorming. My hippocampus is doing its duty. My prefrontal cortex is really helping. And what the teacher has done is she has turned these kids loose on things that they just love. And letting them do all kinds of research. And so right now, brains, there's a group of kids in her class that are just really excited about the brain. And they're reading, they're watching videos, they're writing papers. I mean, it, it's amazing. Uh, and I thought that was cute. So that's Elma Elementary School. And we're really excited about the quality engaging learning that's happening at our schoolhouse. So Mark, is there anything you want to add to that, sir?
I just want to add just a couple, a couple of things. Remember that all this engaged, uh, learning is attached to priority standards. With a defined set of outcomes to, uh, assess those students', uh, proficiency of those standards. I want to say one more thing because when I was a kid, if my dad or my mom was engaged, I was engaged. So one of the things that they haven't talked about is way back, we used to do student of the month assemblies. Parents would come, all the whole family was engaged in coming and finding out what was going on at the school. COVID hit, kind of lost that, had some large numbers, but this year Greg and Heather, uh, brought that back. And so now we've got parents, grandparents back in the schools, engaged. I mean, I spent most of my early childhood trying to make sure my dad wasn't engaged. But one of the best ways to engage elementary students is to engage their, uh, parents and their families, so.
Thing that Greg and I get to have incredible conversations, um, you know, that, what did I ask you to do when I asked you?
What's this?
I can't remember.
It was like, you and I have incredible conversations every month. And I just want you to have the same conversation with the board. One of the things Greg committed to, and I saw it in the photos, and I just kind of want to hit the continuity of that. Is we want, Greg made and Heather made a commitment, both administrators made a commitment to eliminate like the rows and ranks setup. And you'll notice that there is no setup where all the desks are just set up in rows and ranks. That is built around the teacher being the center of all knowledge. The classroom is set up where every area is in, all the students are in groups to create that learning environment where it's student to student costs. Student to student conversations and the students are really the center of the learning, not the teacher being the center of the learning. That's a really big locus of control shift that the elementary has taken on. But really Greg and Heather's leadership has really focused super intentionally on coaching and you can see it transition this year. I've just been so impressed with both of them as administrators and just your team, your whole teaching team. Is as we've been walking through each month and you're going into camp. is, as we've been walking through each month, and you're going into camp classrooms, you would start seeing, like, there, like, groupings, and every classroom being restructured into these student groups, and the elimination of the rows and ranks, and that's where I kind of just reached that point. Before, was it the day of the presentations, I think we were there?
Yeah.
How many classrooms have we been to see that day?
I think we had, uh, three.
That first walk, and then you had a demonstration afterward, so just as a break, show me all the grouping, and it's just all over, it doesn't matter what you go, we can go to any group, we can go to no row and ranks.
What was neat too is we went to a specialist class, and what they were doing was amazing, and kids had different activities, the specialist teacher, mathematics, talked to the teacher, said, hey, what, what concepts are kids struggling? So she had like the big three concepts they were struggling with, she was giving the kids another way to interact with those concepts, and then kids could sign up, if you wanted some additional practice with fractions or whatever it was, then she would do small group instruction, and kids, they could choose, so that was just, it was so fun seeing the level of engagement. We went into an email classroom, and the little kids, what they were working with, they then took the concepts they were working on, but they had a store, a student store, and they had a big culminating event where they sold, explained, marked, and everything, it was just engagement was through the roof, and we just went for a walk, said, hey Chris, let's go, we just popped in classrooms, and this is, this, this teaching was happening, and it's just really exciting, so.
One more thing about locus of control, since Chris brought it up, is that a lot of the student-to-teacher engagement now, whether it's through a badge book, a data binder, or through the use of power, is all around where are you at within the specific, your journey, your learning journey to become proficient at this standard? That kind of, giving that over to students has made huge impacts on. Yes, some competitive cases.
I was just thinking, when you said this, but that shared culture of learning, you know, because I think it's hard for kids to spend a whole, especially elementary, spend a whole year in an environment where you're, you, in theory, are doing that engaged talking and processing that way, and then to shift to another teacher, you know, that could look very different, so to have that common shared, and then, you know, really the difference of, are we creating, are we developing kids who can, you know, solve problems, or are we developing problem solvers? And I think what we're seeing is problem solvers, you know, and it's the, all the soft skills that we know are so important, so, I don't, it was fun to see. Thank you.
Yes, so. Give me some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do not have anything to PowerPoint, because I didn't know that was, that I was supposed to do. What I do have is some really good news about how we are utilizing our lab coaches in English now. So we are becoming really intentional at high school, middle school, looking at data, so both schools instructional team leader, leadership teams will look at data every three weeks and determine how our lab coaches in particular are going to push into Algebra I and Geometry classes, freshman English. At the middle school, we focus on grade data, and the highest number of students in each grade level class that were struggling, and wanted to push our lab coaches in English into those classrooms to give students the right now support that they needed to develop their skills, so we really, the coolest thing, and I should take a picture, I didn't even have this, is to have a student come in, a ninth grade student who has struggled, and say, I was not gonna go to math, but I'm glad I did, because now I can write equations, and, and I'm hearing more and more conversations like that in particular at the high school, so our focus really has been on developing the skills and confidence of students in those transitional years in particular, sixth grade in math and English, ninth grade in Algebra I and Geometry, so that they start feeling really confident about their skills as learners, so some of the things we've done is implement RTI during Eagle time, so two days a week, Christie and I kind of worked together to banagled some time where kids, teachers identify kids who go to them to get additional support in math or English, those are our two focus areas. And that just started, and that was all from our instructional team leaders at high school. How can we optimize every instructional minute of the day, knowing that a lot of our kids can't come before school, they can't come after school, so we have this time during the day, how can we capitalize on that? We have sixth grade, eighth grade at the middle school implementing interim assessment blocks, which are released SBA specs, and they do two things, one, help kids get used to how to take the test using the tools that are available to them, and two, gives that right now data on where they are mathematically as far as their skills. And the sixth grade math teachers have taken off with it, and actually, the last set of assessments that they administered showed that they're about four percent above the state average in mathematics, which is really, really exciting. Our eighth grade has also implemented the interim assessment blocks, Jenny Monroe in particular, using those for formative assessments, and her students are scoring about five points above state average, so I'm just really proud of what both schools are doing, and our intentional focus on data, and how teachers have been open to, let's take a look at all of the data, because this isn't about teachers, this is about our students, and so developing pretty robust PLCs around data, it's been really fun to see. And then, of course, you know about our work with Standards-Based Grading and Empower, so every single secondary teacher building activities that they will measure student growth based on proficiency scales, that work will continue next year, so that we can become really consistent on what does it look like to be meeting standard in ninth grade English, in Algebra I, and et cetera, and teachers have been really, you know, at first intimidation, but have really jumped into the work and done some really, really good work. So I'm, I'm just super proud of both secondary schools.
Give an example, what Tasha is talking about, is the state does release assessments for the students to begin getting opportunities, sixth grade and eighth grade, we're really quick to volunteer to say that they would like to have their students be able to see, experience, and interact with that state assessment, so, and you're starting to see how our students are moving beyond and outperforming the state. I mean, that's slight at this point, but the big goal was to ensure that we have this focus on the middle school, and that's really that emphasis on data, it's really been the priority of the secondary school, which also did kind of create this model on, this is data we can show that doesn't get into the data, but a lot of the data we have really dedicated into a, that was Tasha's question, what type of data can you want me to bring and show? Because it starts having student names and student, because the data is really localized now to the student, on how that student can improve their score. So I did have this one show out, and this is what the students are interacting with, we need to begin seeing how we compare to the state, building that competitiveness, and being able to build that, that growth there.
Hey Chris, I just have a question, on, so the district is eighty-one students, so is this, or what grade is this?
Eighth grade math.
Eighth grade math.
I'm zoomed way in to keep up.
Yeah, I just kind of see the parts.
Yeah, 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 you, yeah, that's kind of intentionally, so it's a good question. Because I, if I didn't zoom in this far, you'd have to self-report.
I'm just really, really proud of them, because it's very, as a teacher myself, nerve-wracking to be sharing your data with your name attached to it, and I taught in a tested subject, and so that is always very humbling, but they really have jumped right in, and I'm just really proud to be able to do this work.
Really, versus state, get the sample size, the nineteen oh eight?
It's based on who signs up.
Okay. You don't, there's a random number.
I mean, like I said, six and eight chose to do this, you don't have to sign up to have an opportunity to go through the state assessment, but obviously, those who do are gonna have better odds of doing it, so right now, it's trying to get our teachers used to this data, this measurement, and seeing the impact in our six and eight.
And, and we were going to have full interim assessment block, grade six through twelve, but I really heard from staff, it felt very overwhelming with all of the chains we're working on in power, we're building proficiency scales, and so I wanted to, to honor that, and so we pivoted, but certainly the invitation was, here's what your kids could potentially get out of it, because it's not just about measuring their mathematical or literacy skills, they have to understand the operational pieces of the test, and that takes practice.
Just how to be a better test taker, regardless of the content.
Right.
Okay, that's.
But next year, I'm hopeful, we can really, as teachers start to see the success we're having with interim blocks, and they get data right away, that there will be more comfort around doing that.
How long is the test, is it like a class period that they would do, or?
The focused interim blocks take about ten, fifteen minutes.
So they're, they're snapshots, they're, okay.
And then they could do the full IABs, which could take, I mean, in English, you know, up to an hour.
Okay.
But then the data they get back is just so rich, and it's all aligned to rubrics, and so we're instructional tools to use.
And to Chris's point, the data that we're getting is getting very granular at this point. The ELA coach for the middle school and high school did an oral reading fluency test with every student in the middle school and every student in the high school. We have never had that kind of data, from where each of our students is at with their reading fluency, never had that. They're using I-ready and Common Lit, so then, along with that, check comprehension. And so we have a lot of data on each student, interestingly enough, I sat down in all the coaching meetings, where they met with the teachers, they took this data in, met with every single teacher on the ELA team, and talked about every one of those students that were students of concern, and what was it about each one of those students that we could do to target to help, a lot of it came down to motivation. That's why I think we can underscore a lot of the other types of work that's going on in the high school. You know, when we talk about priority scales and defined outcomes, the middle school, high school, when we began this journey, they were kind of lost with that, they didn't have the ownership of those priority standards or, or the outcomes that, that were created, they actually had chosen to use Marzano's critical concepts, because we needed something to get into Empower, but now, two years later, what we're seeing is the ownership in those teachers, they're now sitting down with their teams, and they're beginning to understand what's important about a standard for editing the proficiency scales that were put into, into Empower, because they recognize they're not teacher-friendly, but they're not student-friendly. And so making that student-friendly is engaging, just doing that, getting into that process and owning that, I, I think, is what we're seeing right now. And then in terms of student engagement, you guys have had a couple of presentations here that were from student leaders around where we were at with student belonging, sense of belonging, and student value of their education. Four years ago, when we were doing social emotional surveys, we got that same data. And so, over the last couple of years, we've made this a focus of our concern, more importantly, the students have made it. We've been working with Vincent Perez from the Equity Institute, helped students gather data from each other, so we had mentors gathering data from other students around what they liked in their schools that was going on, what they saw might, we, we might need some changes on. Then, last week, we had, I know that Stephanie was able to see it, we had a very dynamic speaker come in, and one of the teachers, the students, and it was all around bringing the value back to the people in your school and your school. And this morning, we sat down, I get it, just get chills right now, through this work, we had seventy student leaders from the middle school and the high school today to gather with Vincent, taking the data, taking what they learned from Isaac Butts, and building student-led initiatives that they're going to lead in their school, so some of them are gonna make their way to you guys, get ready for it, some of them are very ambitious, but these are initiatives that will change the way kids feel about whether they belong in that school, whether they value that school, it's gonna bring a sense of pride back to our school. And that work alone, if you get students engaged in their school activities and in their school, they're gonna be engaged in the classroom. So that alone is gonna bring that student engagement. Two other things, just really quick, we just finished, our admin team just finished T-PAP training, that we've been going through this whole, through this whole year, we just finished that training up, what that did for the admin team was, it gave them the opportunity to have conversations around what good instruction looked like, and to calibrate their own work as they go in, and they work with teachers, grow their instruction. And you guys all already are aware that on top of that, we've got some instructional material adoptions that we just brought in, so we've got tools in for their instruction, teachers are digging into that, learning how to use those tools, and we have some professional, very great with that, so there's a lot of great things going on, and here's what I think is gonna happen, the next couple of years, all these ends are gonna come together, the, of what we've been doing, and we're just gonna see some tremendous growth in our school and our kids, and I just believe in that, so. Do you have any questions?
I have a comment, I think my favorite part of this is that, I would say the intellectual empowerment of the younger students to be in the driver's seat changes their educational focus and drive so far out than I think what has been traditionally happening, it's pretty exciting to watch that, I think it's, it's a pretty amazing feat to be a part of, so, thank you.
Yeah, we have some incredible kids, we have some incredible instructors and leaders.
Thank you. All right, with all that great stuff, one more great stuff, middle school day in life?
Yeah, we're looking at April eleventh for the day in life, I'm just trying to get a good count on board members that can make April eleventh, so we can connect you with your middle school student, and it's the same process, and then we'll do a, I don't know if the survey I gave works, something other than that, because I didn't respond to the test.
Well. Like I told you too, I was a little with mine, I was in the same track the whole time, I was trying to figure out if I should do one or two or three.
So I might, I might look at a couple of other ways on how we do it, to talk about what that learning environment looks like, but you want to make sure that as we move into the board tree, we have serious data to move off of, to build our plan, I'm kind of like, what we're thinking about, what we'd like to see for our kids. But April eleventh is, I should handle this.
I, I can be there that day.
I can be.
What's your soccer scheduling or work schedule?
Oh, everything, I have, I have multiple calendars, right, I gotta look at the work calendar, the soccer calendar, and then the calendar that matters, the one that is posted from home.
That's your wife?
Yeah, it looks like I should be able to do, do it.
Greg and Tasha are in the middle of parent-teacher conversations, it's nice to get, let me get back to the topics.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
Hello, Elma School District. We have great kids, great teachers, we are so glad, yes, like Mark said, watch.
Well, thank you guys very much, we appreciate it, I agree more.
Enjoy your spring breaks.
Yes.
I say, I'm sure it's well deserved.
All right, you know, a second, now I'm gonna read through my writing. All right, public comment, is there anybody for public comment? Unfinished business, approval of policy thirty-two oh five, sex discrimination of students prohibited, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy thirty-two oh five, sex discrimination of students prohibited, second and final.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve policy thirty-two oh five, sex discrimination of students prohibited, second and final reading, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say nay, motion carries. Approval of policy forty-two hundred, parent access in safe and orderly learning environment, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy forty-two hundred, parent access in safe and orderly learning environment, second and final reading.
I'll second.
There's been movement seconded to approve policy forty-two hundred, parent access and safe and orderly learning environment, second and final reading, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say nay, motion carries. Approval of policy forty-two ten, regulation of dangerous weapons on school premises, second and final reading. Uh, approval of policy forty-two ten, regulation of dangerous weapons on school premises, second and final reading.
I'll make a motion, approve, approval of policy forty-two ten, regulation of dangerous weapons on school premises, second and finally. I'll second.
This has been moved a second, approve policy forty-two ten, regulation of dangerous weapons on a school premises, second and final reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All who oppose say nay. Motion carries. Approval of policy fifty eleven, sexual harassment of district staff prohibited, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy fifty eleven, sexual harassment of district staff prohibited, second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded to approve policy fifty eleven, sexual harassment of district staff prohibited, second and final reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All who oppose say nay. Motion carries. Uh, I do want to state that we are moving towards a new um platform. So eventually, these policies will be uh out so that everybody can see them here probably in the near future. So um, July, so yeah. So we're hopeful to get those out so that the public has a better access to look at those policies as we approve them. So just creating a little bit more transparency. All right, moving on to new business. Uh, approval of twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, new market skills center agreement for inter-district cooperative educational services.
Just our standard annual new market.
I'll move the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six, new market skill center agreement for inter-district cooperative educational services.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, new market skill center agreement for inter-district cooperative educational services. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All who oppose say nay. Motion carries. Reports.
See, as we enter our second semester, uh, uh, at our second semester. Stay up, we're down a little bit. Made them false grade level. And then, um, ALE numbers have also continued to raise. Um, and uh indoors numbers, indoors numbers have stayed consistent. So we're sitting about sixteen thirty-six on average. So we're doing pretty well.
All right. Budget report.
You guys should have all got a copy of your budget report. Um, any questions on it? You can see we're just following our norms, right?
Like readjusted and moved all over the place. I can see in our unbalance, just because, just, just don't know.
Has there been any changes in the recent legislation? Funding model.
No, they're not going to look at changing that right now.
The state is very clear that they have funded education enough and they're not going to put any more money into education. And almost everything has fallen off.
That good special education and everything?
It's really got a little hike, but it was going to be like um, hundreds of dollar hike and now I think it's down to forty-six.
Yeah, and the M S O C rate is pretty low. There's been a lot of non uh fiscal, like, um, but it will help with scheduling. Like, uh, adding a C T E to sixth grade C T E. We currently only have a seventh and eighth grade in C T. Um, it looks like they're going to move forward on allowing sixth grade to take the courses. You just won't get the financial enhancement, which is fine. I still call that a positive because not being allowed to schedule sixth graders into C T classes because of teacher certification. Uh, makes it so we have to schedule sixth grade around C T programs to now sixth grade can go in. I mean, it'll they're not going to generate the enhancement, but it will generate some just fiscal benefit by having more classes and more options for sixth graders. So there's some, there's some wins, but there's really not many in this legislative session. And we'll let in, and we'll have another long session for two more years. So yeah, I think that they was it's competing.
And then it's, it's up in the air with our federal funding, which is part of special education, or title of the needs. And they, it's going to be our resources.
I mean, the big conversation right now is we don't know what the federal government means when they make statements. So like, we have a federal legal obligation for I D E A for special education. But special education is technically D E I versus the equity and inclusion. So, um, if the federal government says we're eliminating D E I, does that mean you're eliminating special education? But that's federally required under I D E A. Is there an understanding of what D E I is when we make statements that we're going to eliminate D E I? Uh, because when you're looking at all of these programs across the board. So it really means that we have absolutely no idea what the federal government will do. Because we don't necessarily know if the federal government knows what the terms they're using actually mean, what they include.
Well, it's a good thing we're sitting with a little bit of a little bit anyways, in case, in case something. Either way, I guess I feel better than not having that down to zero.
I think the big thing that we want to be prepared for fiscally is we talk about a fund balance to float ourselves before bills not paid. I think probably what will happen in a worst case scenario is a federal move. Like we're talking, like talking about moving special education to Department of Health and Human Services. Um. Um, is that going to create a lapse in all our federal payments for special education? So now we need to have enough money and fund balance. Right now, as school districts across the state that are in bad fiscal positions, I mean, many, many school districts in the state do not have enough money and fund balance to flow their bills. And now we have a very real reality that we won't have enough money to, like, not us, but like, now this is a very real reality that you won't get your federal funding. So now you need to pay your bills, but the federal government will not be paying you in I D A special education. So I think the major pressure is, is those who have enough money and fund balance to survive these U S Supreme Court lawsuits till the money comes in. Um, are people be the winners and those who do not will probably be risking bankruptcy. Be my. I think that's probably going to be the worst case scenario that we'll see. Because I D E A is, is a federal law. So they're not paying for it, but it might mean that school districts are going to have to pay these bills based upon what's in fund balance. So I do feel good that we spent, I mean, I get a lot of conversations, can we get a para, can we get a this, can we get a this, can we get a this? But we built up our fund balance. So I do feel confident that we'll be one of the survivors. But I don't feel like many of our neighbors will be.
I'm just looking at federal funding, federal general purpose, federal special purpose, just kind of gauging how much money that is year to date, looks like a couple million dollars. Yeah. So three point five, maybe even four million bucks. That's quite, quite.
Pretty much through federal funding for special one. The other is the food service. That's about eight hundred thousand.
So it's, it's, it's a, it'd be a significant effect. Yeah, it's just talking through it, you know? So it's nice having a fund balance where it's supposed, you know, supposed to be. Yeah, now, now let's go to something positive. All right, thanks Lisa. All right, good to the order. Uh, would you like to go first, Nesme?
Was at the WARA conference, the Washington Education Research Association. Um, they, this is not an insult, they actually own this title. Um, it is the Washington Nerd Conference. It is all of the number of countries and data people in Washington State. So, and unbeknownst to me, they kicked off the conference and it was the post-secondary preparedness conference. So it's all about things that are happening with research-based methods that Gates Foundation is there presenting. Washington Roundtable, if you're familiar with Washington Roundtable, they're a uh, a corporation led by the major, uh, uh, a nonprofit led by all the major corporations in Washington State vested in improving school performance. So like the T Mobiles and the Microsofts and the Boeings sit on the Washington. So they're presenting, Gates Foundation are presenting, and then you have state agencies, O S P I is presenting. And uh, here at E C, Educational Research Data Center. And they kicked off the conference with the school, uh, showing that post-secondary enrollment is kind of sliding off statewide. Um, but then they kicked it off with the top schools in the entire state of Washington that have had the largest gains. And number one in the top schools based from the numbers people, not the people that you fill out an application for and apply. And then it has to sound really, really good, just the numbers people. Um, they don't know who we are or what we're doing. They just know these are the numbers. It showed that Elma had the highest post-secondary rate gains in the entire state of Washington. So it was kind of nice that we said that as our priority and I just wanted to set the tone. It wasn't because we asked for them to find us. It was they exported the numbers out of Tableau. They looked at the numbers through this Excel spreadsheet and said, here's the school districts with the highest numbers. And then it was like on the big screen. Um, and we didn't know. So anyway, that was a very proud moment to say like, wow, the the, the, the number nerds have said we had the best impact in the entire state. We worked every bit intentionally. So then today, we hosted the Kent School District to come take a tour of the work that we've been doing. So we were really happy to have the Kent School District coming in, taking a tour of our work on how they can begin modeling. So having large King County school districts trying to come learn to be like, how can we be more like it all? It's a great experience. And then number three, through much work, our uh, our conditional use permit uh, was approved to take back. We're not done. We still now need to do a floodplain study. We're now moving on to, that was done this morning at ten thirty. So we will be moving on to a, you need to do a floodplain study now, which has been added in as part of this process.
I bet we find out we're in a floodplain.
And there's a reason why.
I got pictures to show. Here's your study.
Stands we're building are made out of like bobs or something like, like they're made to be flooded. So but we have to.
It's not necessarily a bad thing. I mean, if we decide to do more improvements down in that area, these, all these studies will serve. Um, hopefully our benefit in the future. Yeah, yeah, so. So it is kind of.
That, I, that's a good thing.
Those are our three big pieces right now. I could like, uh, have any coaching room could really lead off with our start or sprint sports. I'll still that matter.
Uh, it's been wet. That's all I have to say. It's been extremely wet. Uh, uh, as you guys all know, the weather tonight, uh, we actually had to postpone the games that night and move it to tomorrow. But uh, spring sports is in full full action. Uh, soccer's been kind of on the road because of how wet it's been. So, but it's been fun, just really, really uh wet, exciting. It's exciting year. And I don't know, you get those years, you get really excited and this is one of them. So it's early and we're only three games in, but it's exciting. Uh, other stuff that I had, I did have the opportunity to go on the fifth grade field trip this week. Uh, I got lucky and got the day that didn't pour down rain. So I heard the first day was really wet, which, what was that, uh, Tuesday? I think that, yeah, Tuesday it rained, but uh we were able to go down. It was fun. They got to release their, their fish and stuff. And then they did a fun project at the end. Uh, it was fish art. So they had to go around and find tree limbs or anything that wasn't attached. And they had to create a fish out of the, you know, the tree branches or leaves or well, they have a ton of them. They're going to make a, they're going to make a whole mural. I think of all the, the ones that they made. It's inspired by, and I don't know the guy's name, but there's uh, there's an artist that I guess did this in Pacific Northwest. So I was kind of inspired about that. So that was a fun trip. I, I kind of wanted to also thank the A S B for the invitation to the presentation. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go because we had a Hoaklim game, but.
Yeah. I, I, that's what I was.
I won't feel your thunder. I'm just saying, thank you. Uh, other than that, let's see, what else I have on my list? I, I did, I was going to say it when Greg was here, but my fourth grader really liked the presenter on Lewis and Clark. He came home and said everything about it. It was really exciting to see him come home and share stuff from school because it's not always the case, right? They don't always share, but you can tell when they're really excited and they come home and share material. So that's a, that's, that's great.
You know you're old when you remember that guy coming in with real guns. You remember the year where we had to say, I don't think.
You do that anymore?
That was when we could all drive our trucks to school.
And then the other thing that popped in my head, I've been kind of doing some research and I kind of fell across this that, uh, for the good of the order, some districts choose to sit in on staff meetings and then kind of report back on as such. Uh, the board that I picked out that was doing, they actually do a state of the district address that is actually from one of the board members to the staff. That has been basically put together, but I thought that was kind of interesting and see the end and then listen to staff comments. Something that I'm researching, so I just kind of put that, I don't, I haven't done anything but watch it. So I don't know how that would work. So just other than that, uh, that's all I have. Stephanie.
Um, I just was going to share back on the Isaac Butts, um, staff presentation. I sat in on the high schools, but I had talked to actually, um, one of the middle school staff that had been there the day before and um, you know, really staff soft work at three thirty and, um, the middle school team. I think they were still heavily engaged at five and the high school is still going strong, well past four thirty for both days. Um, and if, if there were teachers were missing, I wouldn't have known. I mean, it was, it was very, very well presented. Um, or represented by all the staff. Uh, I think the students did a great job of, I think they handwrote invitations. They may have, you know, uh, I don't just feel like guilty, but I think the kids actually did a really important job of, um, speaking to the staff of how important they are as part of um, kind of rebuilding some culture. And uh, from the teacher standpoint, I thought he did such a good job of speaking into their calling versus their career. And he was very passionate about that. He reminded them of their power to be a hero, that, um, every educator has a chance to literally change a child's life that you never know what child, when somebody chooses to see something in them and to basically help foster that potential, what that really, you know, can do to change an entire life. Um, but then he really, the part that I think I loved is he really spoke to the staff about he gave them lots of opportunities. What do you want to see? And, you know, they're, they're putting all their hopes and dreams out there. And then he really just challenged them, and I believe he did this with the students as well, of well, whatever you want, you have to be the first to bring. And, and he was actually, uh, picking on Travis Frinpro for one of the moments because one of the words that Travis said was, um, he wanted school to be fun. And so he's like, okay. And Mark was in there, he's like, well, are you fun? I mean, he was just being, you know, but he's like, you gotta bring the fun. If you want the fun, you have to be willing to bring it, not just to sit around and wait for somebody else. Not to wait for your administrator to get fun or, you know, the kids to get fun. You've got to bring the fun. And I think he just did a really good job of, um, inspiring them at a very personal level to be accountable for their own personal contribution instead of being kind of critical about what other people are or are not doing. Um, I don't know, I, I felt like it was just a really good grounding that everybody I think for the investment that the A S B kids did, I think it will yield some really good fruit. So I'd love to be a part of it. And I think, um, in response to your thought, Michael, I feel like I got overwhelming. Um, a gratitude for being present of, of, of either noticing the board, just being aware and present to learning about what they're trying to learn about. So I, I do feel like that might be well received at large.
Well, keep doing some research and kind of bring some stuff back. Because I just caught it when I was watching something because I was trying to, I was trying to do something else. You always catch something when you're doing research for others. So I was like, wait a second. They just say that? Okay, so I want to see how they do it before I go like, yeah, let's try this.
Uh, I don't have a school share. I have a school share. It's kind of a personal share, but we have a young lady in our home that's been in our house since August and had to make up about half a year of school from last year. And she's made that up. She's been running star ASU. She's been accepted to five nursing programs across the nation. Saint Mary's being one of them and she is officially accepted as a Revel, U N L V. There we go. And she is officially accepted as a Revel, UNLV, here we go. And two scholarships from them as well, so onward and upward of the opportunities presented to her at the district have been fabulous, and so we're super proud of her.
See, somebody was her hero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not sure, but she's doing it. Nice job.
I don't have anything.
Uh, looks like next, I'm just looking at future agenda items, next meeting's April night, focus on kids. And then before we break this down, everybody have a great spring break, well-deserved, have some time off, enjoy your family. Yeah. Enjoy, enjoy your family if you can. You know, it sounds like it's still going to be wet, but.
I think everybody in this room is working next week.
Yeah, we're the two bigs here.
All right, okay, so preaching, everybody else, enjoy your spring break with that.
I'm taking, I'm taking off different time for one.
Does anybody want to see one?
Make the motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Still moving a second, and during the meeting, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.